Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the finance committee. Today is Monday, October 21st. We'll begin, I'm sorry, 25th. We will begin with a review of the September 2021-2022 financial report. Mr. Riddle.
So this is the financial report through September. Through September, we are forecasting a positive year end balance of $170,401. This continues to assume we will be reimbursed for all items lost during Storm Elsa and Storm Ida. Those items are being tracked under an organizational code under RC12, reserved for emergency repair. We did include a schedule of damages for both storms. Storm Elsa is a total of $31,084, and Storm Ida stands at $353,403, that we expect that to accumulate slightly more, so in total about $385,000. We are, in order to get reimbursement, because we are on a shared insurance plan with the town, the town also has to submit all their claims before any funds can be released. So in total, the change from the previous forecast was $2,661. The changes is an additional salary savings of $185 net of substitutes. Nurse substitutes are covering for a vacant athletic trainer. Athletic transportation savings for girls swim and dive for $5,156. Salary savings from a vacant electrician, which has now been filled for $778. District legal fees, $6,800. Long-term substitute savings of $41,499. This will be a transfer recommendation as we get further along on the agenda. An SLP, who we previously thought would be covered by a long-term substitute, is being covered by a contractor. Additional staff turnover of $3,500. Special ed legal fees continue to trend positive for a total of $11,800. Contracted speech, we did see a price increase from one of our vendors of 12.5% from the previous year. That is a shortfall of $37,125, which is a recommended transfer as well. Contracted speech deficit of $41,000 as a long-term leave of absence is being covered by a contractor, as I mentioned earlier. Electricity is trending lower by about $3,700. Savings from telephone of $194. Sewer fees came in about $5,000 less than budget. Property insurance claims for reimbursement for the central office roof is $4,800. Salary savings for an ELP para of $3,400, and then a change in the COVID cleaning of buses by $6,200. A couple of our providers are mandating that we have cleaning on our out-of-district transportation providers. So in total, the general education RC standard a positive $242,123. Special education RC standard negative $62,714, primarily driven by the speech change I mentioned earlier. And then the COVID RC is a deficit of $9,008. To go through some of the changes from the previous month. RC11, a slightly higher positive balance of $8,555 in athletic training services. We still have a vacancy in the athletic trainer. They are covering it with substitute nurses, so it is the net of those two expenses. Athletic transportation, as I mentioned earlier, is a positive balance of $10,0312. We do still have a shortage of drivers, and so some of our charter transportation runs are not being able to be covered. So that is savings in the boys' golf team, girls' swim team, and dive team. RC12, the district electrician, which has been hired as of mid-September, is a total salary savings of $4,254. District legal fees continue to trend positive by $15,600. Staff turnover is $3,703 to the positive. As we mentioned at the previous meeting, we did budget for a turnover of 28 employees with an average savings from a master's 19 to a master's 15.
Mr. Riddle, can I interrupt you for one second? Mr. Seeny is logged on and is getting a message that says he's awaiting for the organizer to arrive.
You're Jeff, sir? Especially here, Jeff? He's in his office. I don't know if it's a different thing.
Sorry, I'm pausing just for a minute because I'd like him to be able to get it, if possible.
Did Mrs. Best get it?
Yeah.
In the same line?
No.
Would you like him to try to log in and log back out? Got him?
Got him.
Okay. Mr. Seeny, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Perfect, okay. Rich is on RC12 explaining where we are right now on page 2 of the update.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So RC12, as I had mentioned, the district electrician retired at the end of August. We did find a replacement who has started, but salary savings from that vacant period is $42,54. District legal fees continue to trend positive by a balance of $15,600. Staff turnover is a positive $3,700. We did mention this last meeting, but just to highlight it again, we did budget 28 employees with an average savings from a master's 19 to a master's 15. We did have 53 staff members turnover. However, the 53 members, 24 were under a step 10, which is rather unusual. And 19 members were hired at a salary more expensive than the employee who left. That is one of the reasons why we didn't see actually more than we anticipated. If you take out those 10, those 24 members under a step 10, we actually got relatively close, which is why we're left with that balance of $37,000. Long-term substitutes is a positive balance of $41,499. An SLP was out on a long-term leave of absence. It's not being covered by an employee, but rather a contractor. So that'll be a transfer recommended as we get further along on the agenda. Budget control still shows the positive .6 FT left at $43,000. No change in RC23, RC24. Legal fees shows a positive balance of $23,600, as the first few months legal fees have trended under budget. Contracted speech is a deficit of $78,125. There are two reasons, and we did break that up for two transfers. The first is, one of the main speech providers has increased rates from last year by 12.5%. That rate increase is contributing to a $37,000 increase, projected increase in that account. And then the second is an SLP who is out on a long-term leave of absence, who is being covered by a contractor rather than an employee, as an employee could not be found. So this is really, that portion of it is really an accounting adjustment resulting in a deficit of $41,000. And then again, excess costs is budgeted at 67.5%. The first submission is due December 1st. Going to RC25, the main change is really sewer fees. Sewer fees came under budget by about $5,000. And then if we move to RC26, the vacant teacher aid still has a positive balance of $8,0560, which is just the period of time in which that position has not been filled. And then moving to RC28, COVID transportation is forecasted at a deficit of $9,008. We do have multiple out-of-district providers. All are requiring additional cleaning to utilize their services similar to last year. So this amount is for just the out-of-district providers for $9,008, and there is a recommended transfer for approval for the Board of Education.
Any committee questions? Mrs. Ritchie? Sorry, too much stuff.
Can we go to the YMCA, the savings that were realized there? Does that figure, the 30, it was $34,000, does that include the savings for no longer having legalized the Boys and Girls Club down in Greenwich?
So no, that is just the savings related. It's not absorbing the cost of custodial over time, so we are billing that back to the YMCA.
So, but the money that we no longer have to pay out to the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club, where is that?
So that, we haven't flagged that as a positive. Chris does have some ins and outs within RC11. That would be in the supply account in RC11.
Okay, so that we are not realizing that?
Not quite yet.
Other committee questions? Are we currently advertising to replace the athletic trainer?
We are, but my understanding is the applicants have been very, very little.
Okay. And we're comfortable with coverage for students?
Chris would rather have a trainer or even a contracted trainer, but he has not been able to find either.
Okay. Any other questions? Mrs. Ritchie?
Just on the contracted speech. So do we feel comfortable now that we've stabilized that line item and that we won't see any other adjustments or transfers required?
So if there are additional services that are needed, we could see additional transfers. But as of right now, based on the information we know, this would stabilize that account.
And so the changes we see are really salary-based. We did also move some of our SLP into a grant, correct? Recommendation for the board last time?
There is a psychologist in the grant and a special ed teacher. And then we have recovery services in the ARPSR 3 grant.
Okay, so as we look at this and we track our excess costs, are we, once it's in the grant, it's not, it's right?
So you can't double dip?
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking.
So when we make those entries, anybody who's a non-excess cost eligible student, we look for that ARPSR 3 grant first. If you're an excess cost eligible student, the funds that were budgeted for contracted speech would hit in the operating budget first. And so what we're really trying to do is make sure that no excess cost eligible student is going to hit any of the grants. Otherwise, obviously, we can't actually spend it like that.
And so you feel confident you can divide it up like that?
Yep.
Okay, because that, just for anyone listening, what I'm trying to do is understand how putting the money in the grant, because this is a line we watch every year, then affects our excess cost reimbursement, which we've also budgeted for, which comes later in the year.
Yep.
Okay, other board questions? Let's let Mr. Riddle do our grant report. Anything on operating? We had a page on operating on Elsa. Do you want to discuss that now, or you want to take a minute? If you could run through our operating costs on Elsa roughly?
Sure. So there's two storms. The first one was in July, Storm Elsa. The losses total $31,084, which does not include the three trucks. It was primarily a salt spreader, some electrical parts, some door parts, and vehicle parts, and some ground materials. All the items have been filed with insurance, with KERMA. Because we do share a policy with the town, all the town's claims for their damages also have to be submitted before any funds can be released either to the town or the Board of Ed. So we are still waiting for that to happen. We have not gotten any definitive answers to what will be covered or won't be covered. Our expectation, at least from Storm Elsa, is that it will be covered less than deductible, which is about $1,000. So we are hoping to see those checks relatively soon, since that was the first storm. But we have not received any reimbursement outside of just the vehicles that were totaled.
And we're comfortable at this point, we can cover those within our operating budget?
Yep, so if we don't actually get a reimbursement from KERMA by probably around February, the likelihood is we'd have to ask for supplemental appropriation, have those funds come to us, and then whenever the KERMA reimbursement comes over, turn those over to the town as an offset.
Any other questions?
Well, at this point, it might be premature, but are we, I'm imagining we're going to see insurance premiums go up as a result of these two storms, or are we getting any indication of where we're going to come out in the future?
So I would anticipate property insurance will go up rather significantly for next year's budget. They have not let us know what our rates will be, so a little bit too early for that. But just like homeowners insurance, if you file a claim, typically the next year your insurance liability goes up. So I would expect the property insurance to go up. We have other policies with KERMA, such as workers' comp. That is trending relatively favorably, but I would expect the property insurance to be a large increase.
Go ahead.
Just, are we anticipating any change to where we're storing the vehicles and any costs related to that? Because clearly where they were being stored may not be the most ideal place.
Yep, so Mike is, oh, there he is. Mike wants to speak to.
We've slimmed down the amount of equipment and stuff we store at the garage. And like today, we're loading everything up in trailers and taking it up to the high ground in the back because there's anticipated flash flooding this evening, and we just don't want to take any chances with the equipment. But we're not storing, where we used to store a lot of supplies, you know, electrical supplies, plumbing supplies, things like that, in the shops. We're not doing that anymore. Tools are staying on the trucks, so we can get them out of there quickly. But as far as looking for another place to move, no. Just going to watch the weather and see what happens. I mean, it's two freak storms. It's the first two times anybody can remember this happening. And it just happened, you know, within two months of each other. But never before.
Just a follow-up. So when you're moving equipment like that, preparing for a storm, is there additional costs that's involved in terms of overtime, those types of things? Or is it just, are we able to just capture it in our normal operating budget?
The moving of the equipment up out of the way we just do in our regular workday? So there's no real direct?
I mean, there's an opportunity cost. So if they're spending time moving equipment and doing things like that, then they're not doing work orders and things like that.
Yeah. There was an email that made its rounds from the middle school that we were cutting back on the academic club, what used to be called the homework club. I'm sorry, I don't have it up to my tongue right now, for budgetary reasons. That's not something the board heard. Can you guys speak to that a little bit to clear that up?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that that ran over last year by $25,000 of that.
So last year, because of COVID, we didn't run a number of clubs. So the previous principal looked to allocate that money to the homework center and essentially expand it. So it stayed within that line item with clubs and councils. There was no request to keep that expanded academic center for the current fiscal year. So it reverted back to what it's basically always been. And now they're running the clubs that they were intending to run, that they didn't run last year. And so that's why you're not seeing any change in that line.
So there was a lot of, there was a lot of staff members who were participating in that particular club, more than was actually budgeted, and therefore we had to sort of cut it back. And cutting it back, teachers went to two days to cover the amount of teachers that were coming down. That's not, we can't do that. We can't just keep it open for them for as many staff members who want, want to actually participate, because it's not a budget for that. The budget we do have adequately covers the four days, and that has been rectified.
So does it adequately cover the number of students looking to utilize that club? I would think in academic resources, something we'd want to support coming into the year of COVID. So that's really my concern. Do we feel as if the students and the interest by the students to attend that? Because when we just saw, or I saw, that it was cut back for budgetary reasons, I was concerned. It was not something that was, at least budgetary reasons heard at the Board of Education. So we feel like we're covering our student need, and we feel like we're in line with the approved budget.
So the principal and I feel that the amount of, the allocation to it, the amount of resources to it can be covered for the four days. If for some reason that there's an increase in the number of students or otherwise, then I would be happy enough to bring it back to the board. But at this point, I feel like we should, we can and should be able to do that four days a week adequately.
We, that was a resource that we used last year, and it was very helpful. And I think as students, as we're getting back to more normal assistance, there may, I would just say, keep an eye on it because I think, from my perspective as a parent, it is something that was very valuable to us. So I think that, I would think the board in the future would support something like that and make sure that there's more of a need to support that.
That was also the discussion that, if moving forward, that we needed to do something different, then we would bring it to the board.
And you'll just continue to flag if there are any lines actually that you're needing to pull back on. I think that was the perspective that was put out into the public, that we were pulling back, rather than what we were doing was following our budget. And so I just want to make that clear. Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, there's actually a modest increase in the clubs and councils line in this budget year versus last year. Or middle set.
Any other questions? All right, we will move on to budget transfers for September. Or you want to do the grants, sorry?
Do you want me to just do Ida real quick?
Yeah.
So Ida stands at $353,000. The damage from Storm Ida was much more significant than Storm Elsa. The boilers at Henley went down. All the mowers pretty much in the district went down. A lot of the supplies in the shop, a transfer switch at Henley, electrical parts, door hardware, plumbing parts, a royal boiler needs repairs, they all went down. Similar to Elsa, we did file everything with KERMA. We also filed with Mark McEwen, so he could submit to FEMA. But similar to Elsa, because we do share that same insurance policy, we need the town to submit all their claims before we can see any reimbursement.
Any questions?
Do we want to do the grants or the transfers?
Let's do the grants.
So similar to the previous report, the IDA grant, we are forecasting a positive balance of just under $128,000. This is a grant that provides federal funding for education of children with disabilities. Within that grant, it is primarily PARRAS, special education teachers. The IDA 611 ARP grant, which is a new grant, is a two-year grant, similar to the typical IDA grant. The amount awarded to Darien was $199,131. The grant is intended to serve, support recovery services. So similar to the ARPSR grant, any excess cost eligible students, if they were to hit that, you couldn't file for. At this point, we don't have any known expenditures to apply to this grant, and so we are forecasting carrying over those funds. However, it is still early in the year, and that could change. We did apply for it to be recovery services associated with contracted services such as speech, OT, and PT. The Title I grant, the allocation was just over $169,000. This supports professional development and one literacy interventionist. The Title II grant is a two-year grant as well. The allocation was just over $72,000. That supports curriculum development and professional development as well. The Title III grant is a much smaller grant at $7,767, and this is to fund English language learner students. And then the Title IV grant, the allocation is $10,000, and this is to increase access to psychological services, improve school safety or school climate, and parent and community engagement. The Team Mentor grant is a one-year grant provided by the state to promote high achievement by Connecticut students, engaging teachers in professional learning practices. No award has been made at this date, but the state has been cutting back this grant year after year. The Special Education COVID-19 grant, which we had flagged earlier, was for $20,000 to support ESY, and that has been expended in full. And then the ARPSR grant, which is the ESR 3 grant, we are forecasting a positive balance of just under $49,000, which can be carried over for the next three fiscal years. This is from savings associated with lower price points for some of the technology that was purchased, including the smart boards and the access points. The next chance to refile that grant is December 16th, and so we'll have the opportunity to reallocate those funds. And the Darien Foundation, we are anticipating spending $106,500, which is 50% of the grant. And moving on to food service, the month of September was a good month. Sales were $11,443 per day. Though I will say, in October, those sales numbers are higher by about a couple thousand dollars. We're at $13,180. We actually hit $15,000 on Friday for the day, and then we collected $6,600 from Pavilion. And then when we do the October report, we collected about another $6,000 from Pavilion. Overall, things continue to move in the right direction, and we are forecasting a year-end balance of $55,000.
Any questions on the grant report? Mrs. Ritchie?
So by my calculation, in terms of what we have left that we could potentially use for recovery services and COVID-related, it's about $248,000?
That'd be about correct.
Okay, and for the ID, IDA 611 grant, we don't, we don't have any idea how that's going to work in terms of timing and submissions for allocation.
So it's a two, it's a two-year grant.
Right.
So we have this fiscal year and next fiscal year to expend it. It does have to be used for recovery services. At this point, there's no identifiable or known recovery services to encumber or spend against that grant. That doesn't mean there won't be before the end of the year. If there aren't before the end of the year, we do have the opportunity to revise the application for that grant, similar to the IDA, the typical IDA grant. It would still have to be recovery services, but whether that ends up being speech, PT, OT, or needs to change some evaluations or a staff member, you'll have that opportunity again before that grant expires.
Okay, so just, I'm thinking on the, for the homework lover, that in case there's a, we all of a sudden see a need, that wouldn't really qualify.
So it would have to be special education services. For that grant, for the ARPSR grant, you could technically use that for the homework club.
Okay, great. I have a question on the food services, but I just want.
Sure, any other grant questions? Mr. Seeny?
Hey, Rich, thanks. You do such a great job outlining all these grants. Could I ask just?
Could you use your microphone?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Rich. Just because I think a lot of people outside of this room and the board, this has given them good insight. Could you just add the amount of the ARPSR funds that we got? So people understand. I think it's good to everyone to understand the starting point, you know, for people that are tracking through the meetings. Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie, you have another question?
Just on the food services? Could you just, because we changed the Pavilion and how that works, because Chartwell is now managing that for us. Could you just give us a little, a quick overview of how that agreement, what the terms are of that specific agreement?
Sure, so we collect all the sales, and then we reimburse what's called a management fee, like we have for just the district as a whole, and then whatever the food costs associated with the Pavilion, and then the differences kept within the program, so within the food service program. This was the first year for Chartwell's actually running the Pavilion. So it was a little new for them. They actually had a couple of events, homecoming, and then the football game against Newtown, where the sales for just those two events were more than the middle school for the entire day. So it's been very well-received. And talking to Megan, who is the Chartwell's Director of Food Service here in Darien for us, she'd like to expand that next year to maybe do some more DJFL games, kind of really, you know, get a handle on everything that's out there, since this was the first time they were there. But all the sales retained within the program, and then it's just a management fee and food expenses.
Any other grant questions? Okay, Mr. Riddle, we'll move on to budget transfers for September 2021-22.
So there are three transfers for the board to consider. The first is to extinguish that cost in the COVID RC, RC28. So $9,008 to cover the mandated cleaning services from out-of-district providers with the funds coming from savings from property insurance, $9,008. The second transfer is that contracted speech transfer. We did break these up into two. So the first amount for $37,125. This is due to a 12.5% price increase from a primary contracted speech provider. We are recommending taking those, those funds from the savings from custodial overtime from the YMCA agreement, and then some savings from Darien Summer School, which is finished for the year. And then the second is for $41,000 in contracted speech with the funds coming from long-term substitutes, as I mentioned earlier. The hope was to have a long-term substitute cover that leave of absence for an SLP. However, that was not able to come to fruition, so contractor is covering it. So this is really an accounting adjustment from long-term subs to contracted speech, but it does cross-broad categories.
Okay, and I just, I mean, it's early in the year, and I understand the transfer, but long-term substitutes tends to be an area where last year we saw significant overrun. So just everyone noticing, this might be something fluid back and forth that we see.
It could be. Last year, we had a significant amount of leave of absences. We do have some leave of absences that are pending. They're primarily maternity leave of absences for the second half of the year. Those are factored into the forecast at this point. That doesn't mean we won't have any unknown leave of absences, but based on what we know today, we feel pretty comfortable.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. We will bring those forward to the board for consideration tomorrow evening. An update on the proposed cost of the copy center. It looks like this is Dr. Adley, Mr. Riddle, and Mr. Lynch. Gentlemen, tell us what's going on here. These are big numbers.
Go ahead, Mike. You can give the update. You're here, it's fine.
Okay, so we looked at three options for the copy center, moving the copy center downstairs into the basement. And we chose option C, and the architect had forecasted the cost would be $135,000. So there were a couple of factors that contributed to the price being so much out of line. One was the skyrocketing costs of raw materials and labor. The architect didn't figure that this was going to be prevailing wage job. It is prevailing wage jobs, so that was an increase. He misread the scope of what we wanted to accomplish with this project. He didn't include changing out the windows and the exterior door in the basement. He didn't include work that had to be done to the sprinkler system. He didn't include heating and ventilating, or he could use this existing system and just expand it a little. So those assumptions all added up to the cost. So decided to bid the job anyway to see what our numbers would be. We knew we were going to be high. They came in above. They came in above, which Rich and I figured was going to happen. And so I went through the capital budget where we've completed projects or not done projects. To see what we had as a surplus that could get transferred in to the copy center renovation code. And we've done this before on other projects. When it comes to mind, which was a substantial amount of money, was when we put the heating system in this building. We had a overage at the boiler installation at the middle school and we were way, way under installing the heating system in this building. Dr. Pearson this year. And, and it was, uh, we did the budget transfer and the process is we go to the finance committee of the Board of Ed. And then we talked to the Board of Ed, then we go to the Board of Selectmen, and then we go to the Board of Finance. If we keep getting the approval, as we go along, once the transfer's in place, we can form the work.
So I'm sure there's lots of questions. I'm going to start on this one. I think it's probably a little maddening for everyone to hear that the scope was so misread on this. But if we are to consider this, my question would be, what is the value to the copy or center so much more so that, than, than these other projects that we have going? So how are we setting our priorities and determining this?
These projects are completed. This is surplus.
Oh, sorry. So these, sorry, excuse me, for more coffee. So these are our balances that we want to move forward to stop out. And so.
With the exception of the carpet.
Yeah, I, I didn't ask my question accurately and that's on me. The copy, the value the copy center is going to bring for this amount of money, given using all of our surpluses, can someone please explain to me?
Wouldn't be me.
That's not you. Sorry, Mr. Rich. That's Dr. Adley.
So, so, well, operationally, I mean, even this morning, as we see the copy center in terms of its interruption to this meeting. It just, it eventually has to be moved and it has to be relocated. So the actual operational of it, the daily operational in terms of the, the staff using it, that is, that's happening now. But the, but the major reason for disrupting it is to give it a better size, give it a better, give it relocated from this particular location. So that's, the main reason remains the same. The usage essentially will remain the same. It, it's not disrupting that. In terms of utilizing the balances. Like, but it's in the, it's in the, it's in the project at the moment. I think it, it needs to be done because I'll, I'll just flag something like even the AC in this building and so on, so forth, the disruptions. At some point, we have to sort of start making those value judgments over the, over some of the other items. We're just particularly talking about the carpet. If we get that done another time, we get that done another time. It's just.
And are we comfortably using this contractor given the failed bid the first time around? An architect?
Uh, I am. He's, he's, he's an architect with a very good reputation in the state of Connecticut. He specializes in municipal work. And so, yeah, it was, it was just a miss on their part. I mean, you know, that does happen. The contractor, who was the low bidder, he's the contractor that did the windows at the Henley School a couple of years ago. He's got a stellar reputation and so I'm not worried about the project from that end. And, and the finished product that was out on the street and bid was done correctly. You know, the, the mistake was in the scope of the original scope that gave us the number we put in the budget.
Okay, Mrs. Ritchie?
It's a big miss, but if you're confident in the architect and we forward, I guess, I guess it's okay. I just want to be clear, the, these are projects for the most part that have been completed, so we have balances left. And then we're just having to, I guess in the next budget process, get approval again for the carpets at DHS and NMS. If we use these, these figures here toward this project, would that be correct? Because at some point, those carpets need to be replaced, right?
Yes, and we're thinking that when, when they do the whole libraries at those schools. You know, they're, they're, they're in the, in the long-range plan to undergo substantial renovation. Yes.
Okay, so at the, at this point, we wouldn't need an additional appropriation. We could be using funds that have already been allocated toward capital projects. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and I just want clarification on, I'm sorry, on the process. There would not require an RTM approval on this. It would just be the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Is that correct?
Correct, because there's no, there's no new appropriation being made.
Any other questions? Mr. Janine?
So I guess, knowing, I mean, I think we lucked out in planning at Ox Ridge. But I guess my concern, is there a timeframe where we should maybe wait to see material prices come down? And I don't want to start a project and then find out where we can't get windows, we can't get material. You know, we can't get lumber and you've got something in progress where then the costs are going to escalate again. There just seems to be so much supply chain management issues out there right now. The builders are pulling back, builders are stopping. You know, these guys might be looking for, looking for work and being able to really source the material and know, can we get windows in time? Can we get the door in time? Can we, I just, I have concerns of it even escalating more over this.
Yeah, I, I will say I echo those concerns and that's why I asked about, you know, when this project was $135,000 or $137,000, there was. You could see the need now that we're above, you know, $300,000. I just think we need to be really sure, is this where we want to invest our funds? Or go to the town and ask to use these surpluses? So I think it'll be a lively discussion around this at the board. I'm sorry, Mr. Seeny, did I see your hand or no?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, well, I appreciate what happened here. This is a doubling of cost on a project, I think, that came under a little scrutiny the first time around. So at the board table, I'll be recommending maybe we, the board considers, you know, taking a harder look and reconciling the differences in, in the project scope. And maybe we can do that through the facilities committee going forward. But, um, yeah, based on what I'm hearing from my fellow, you know, subcommittee members here, I, I share some concerns as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think that we might need to take a, a harder look at this project. Just given that all of a sudden we're double what we originally approved.
I guess the only other thing I'd throw out, you, you know, you might be tracking or looking at something rich. But, you know, investing 300,000 in a copy center and we're investing millions in technology. At one point, does the use of a copy center and the use of paper and everything start to decrease?
So one of the things, one of the things we mentioned during last year's budget is there was a significant decline in the usage of the copy center. We do, do have a program called Paper Cut, which actually tracks the number of submissions. That was one of the reasons why we recommended that reduction in staff. That reduction in the use of copy center has continued this year.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would support the idea and I do think that's why there will be discussion, but would agree with Mr. Seeny. That we need kind of a, a much closer look at this project before we can just quickly approve moving forward. I think doubling the, the price, we need to really look at the value we're getting out of it. But that's my opinion at this point. Ms. Ritchie?
Just, I'm wondering for the meeting tomorrow night, I don't know if it's possible to get all this, and we don't have it in our packet, but it would be good unless it's in there and I haven't seen it. But could we get more detail on what the, on the project itself and the bid itself? So we can, at the board table tomorrow night, decide if we want to push it back down to facilities committee and have them take a closer look. Is that, is there more information that could be made available to the board for tomorrow night?
Well, we do have the original proposal from the architect that shows what's going to be done. I also have a, a schedule of values from the low bidder of, you know, to do X is going to cost this much, to do Y is going to cost that much. I, would that be?
I think that would be good. I don't know if people agree.
I think that would be helpful as we, as we make this decision.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd like to add that I, there is value to a project that moves, I see the value in moving the copy center out of here because I get a lot of the hits from it. But maybe there's a way to do this project and, and not such a large scope as we originally had anticipated.
Yeah, and arguably in a very tight budget year, I think that if, we have to decide if now is the time to Mr. Janine's point.
Yeah, I also think too, as we did with the renovations and thinking out from a capital standpoint. So then you wind up with an empty room back here. What's the plan there? Does this wall come down? Does this move? Do we add capacity for meetings? I mean, let's think it through so we're not coming back in two years saying, you need to renovate this room because we've got an empty room. I mean, if it, if it, the overall project scope expands, fine, but let's just do the homework on it. Because then you've got an empty space. You also said you wanted to give Jeff maybe a better home and that that's underutilized space back there, a lot of storage back there. So is there a bigger project that makes sense overall and accomplishes a couple of things? We should look at it.
Yeah, we have looked at that and I don't know that they would be big scope things, but yes, I understand.
I'm just saying, like, I don't, I don't want to every year come back and do bits and pieces of stuff. Like, if there's a bigger plan that can be done, we talk about HVAC all the time. Let's think it through. Yes.
Well, and, and that's where there's a lot of this that gets moved down to facilities. I just think from a finance committee standpoint, if we're looking at doubling the budget of something, it's not just as quick as yes. We need to kind of understand the value versus the price tag.
Perfect. Thanks for the discussion.
Um, any other questions on this before we move to public comment? All right, with that, um, we will move to public comment. Oh, hi, Michelle.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Great. With that, can I entertain a motion to adjourn, Mrs. Ritchie? And I need another hand, Mr. Seeny, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.